I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you for everybody being here tonight. Hope everybody's summer's going all right. Can I get a roll call for the Thursday, July tenth, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting of the Southwestern City School Board, please?
Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Here.
Ms. Liskinney.
Here.
Ms. Martindale.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Bosso.
Here. Moving on, adoption of the agenda for tonight. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the agenda for July tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Can I get a roll call, please? We need a motion.
Yes.
So moved.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So moved, Liskinney.
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. I go on vacation. I don't know what's going on.
All right, Ms. Liskinney.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. Moving on now to recommendation for approval of the minutes from the previously, what was the date was that?
June twenty.
June twenty.
Thank you. I don't have that either. Thank you. Any additions or corrections to that?
No.
Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve that?
Motion. Oh, Martindale, okay. Martindale, and then, all second, D'Angelo Steele.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskinney.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. Moving on to public participation related agenda items, I have none. We'll go to student and staff achievement liaison with Mrs. Liskinney.
Thank you, President Bosso. This evening I have three things under student and staff achievement for July. Congratulations to the students who participated in our summer learning academy last month. Their continued dedication to education helped several students move closer to completing their high school journey. We look forward to celebrating these accomplishments during our summer graduation on August fourteenth at Franklin Heights High School. Congratulations to Southwestern Career Academy Certified Nursing Assistant and Broadband Senior Only Program students who have had successful summer programming over the summer break thus far. In the CNA program, forty-two students participated throughout June and into July, and twenty-five of those students have already earned their twelve-point CNA credentials, with the remaining students finishing their final testing or awaiting results. Additionally, every CNA student earned their first aid and CPR certification, an important step in their healthcare training. In the broadband program, fourteen students earned the twelve-point Certified Premises Cableing Technician credential, and another fourteen earned the Certified Fiber Optic Technician credential. On top of that, all broadband students also earned their OSHA-ten certification. So, great job. Lots of work over the summer. Excellent. And then, lastly, I wanted to say a special thank you to Mark Meadows and his team for all of their hard work and efforts to transform the nostalgic Brook Park Building. We'll call it nostalgic. We all love that Brook Park Building, and transforming it into our new Southwestern City Schools Welcome Center for student registration. That opened on Monday for families. Thank you to Ed Kennedy and his team for all of their efforts. They've been working tirelessly and getting the building customer-ready to accept families in. I know that some of the board members have stopped in. I stopped in personally this week. It looks wonderful in there. They're doing an amazing job. And it's just really great to see reusing that building for education purposes. We now have an office in that building. Our unhoused coordinator and a special ed coordinator will be housed in there to work directly with families to streamline the registration process. And I'm just really excited to see what other things Ed has up his sleeve for that building. So, great job. And if you haven't seen it, stop by over there. It looks great. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on now to items for action under personnel with Kelly Martin.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I have two items tonight for action. We're gonna vote separately on them. The first item I have is for the agreement that we have with the Southwestern Education Association. So, I will read, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Southwestern Education Association and the Board of Education effective July first, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-eight. And having reviewed this item, I move it for passage.
Can I get a second, please?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Any comments or anything before we vote?
I myself would like to make a comment. When this tentative agreement was approved, I was on vacation. I was happy. But the following day, a bulletin or a press release got put out by SWIA. In the press release, it said, "This deal would not have been possible without the unprecedented levels of activism and unwavering support of educators, parents, communities, members, and local businesses, all who played an integral part in the advancement of SWIA's bargaining team that made it table towards providing a high-quality supportive learning environment for our students." When I read that, I was appalled. This deal would have got made without all this, without all, like I said, and you can quote me, hysteria in this district that brought negative publicity towards this school district. This school district is running good. We're doing good things in this district. We support teachers in this district. There's not a time that I wouldn't support a teacher in this district. There's not a time that I've went and talked to teachers that cried to me about what's going on in this district. For what SWIA, the leadership of SWIA, I should say, is putting out there is just appalling to me. I myself, I get accused of not being here for public education. There was nobody that wanted to sit on this board and put up with what I put up with and the nasty things that are said about me if they weren't for public education. There's not a time, excuse me, there's not a time that I'm not for public education. There's not a time that I don't go down to State House with Hugh and sit for eight hours to advocate for public education. There's not a time that I don't go to schools and talk to teachers to find out what's going on in this district so we can make this district better. Chandra, excuse me.
I'm not talking.
Somebody's talking over there. Anyways, so, all right, we're gonna go on. There's not a time that this board isn't for this district and the students in this district. We value this district. We value what's going on in this district, and we'll never go any other way. So, going on, I'm gonna ask for a vote, and I'm gonna vote yes on this district because I think this contract, because I think it's very fair between the people in this community that pay the tax dollars to you teachers, and I value you teachers. I honestly do, no matter what the leadership of this union says. I value you teachers. Period. I value the community that votes for me. I'm here to represent both, and it's a fine line you gotta walk. But I think this is a fair contract. It's fair for this community. It's fair for the teachers and the students of this school board, or this school district. And now, can I get a vote on this, Hugh? Thank you. Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskinney.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes, thank you.
Real quick, point of order.
Not right now. Yes, I do. I'm in charge of this meeting, I'm sorry to say. Well, you could turn, you could turn the mic off, please.
Go ahead, Kelly.
The second item that we have for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the management team agreement between Southwestern Administrators Association and the Board of Education effective July first, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-eight. And having reviewed this, I move it for passage.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Roll call.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskinney.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. Moving on now to board reports. Any board reports?
President Bosso, I would like to discuss, I brought up last meeting about having a need in the district for a district financial advisory board. Ms. Peterson and myself have been talking a lot about this over the last few months while she's been overseeing the fiscal and operational management section of the board agenda. And also, it came out in our visioning session that the board was thinking this would be a good idea. So, I think we're all on the same page with this about wanting to move forward with it. But I put something at your table. I'm just gonna read through some of these things. These are the things that we need to decide on. The composition, I just put down a few thoughts that I have and Ms. Peterson had as we talked through it. We believe that the board member that's responsible for the fiscal and operational management items for the year would be the chair of this committee. Treasurer would be possibly the vice chair, and we think another board member would be a good idea to have, choose to serve on that board. Maybe a handful of community members from different sections of the community would be a good idea as well. Those could either be appointed by the group, or they could also be, we could solicit some resumes and some things like that to see. We wanna have a good cross-section of the district, so we think that's important. The amount of meetings that we talked about, this could change, but just first glance, first thought about it, and I talked to some other school districts in the area and what they do, and kind of borrowed from some of their ideas. We think it would be good to have a couple standard meetings a year, one during the fall forecast time in October, November. That way, we could discuss the forecast and the assumptions in a little more greater detail, update this advisory board on the state audit progress and process. And also, one in the spring, sometime April, May, we could also then again discuss the additional and new forecasts and assumptions. And also, talk about the next upcoming fiscal year budget process, budget presentation, and updates on all the numbers. We also felt there could be times where this meeting, this board would meet kind of as an ad-needs basis. Some of these ad-needs basis things would be significant audit issues, levy considerations, debt issuances for either for construction or for refinancing of bonds, and also salary and or benefit changes. Just have that ability to have that group meet then. The structure of the meetings, agendas and materials will be provided one week prior to the meeting, date for review from the board. Minutes will be taken and available, and time of meetings will be dependent on those who serve. You know, sometimes people have day jobs, so they may be at night, they could be during the day. We just have to see how the group would feel about that. And also, yeah, those were the, those are really the, those are really the main tenants of what we captured and when we discussed. So, I would open up to anybody just to have their thoughts and what they think as a board, and then, as we kind of gather some ideas here, come back to the next meeting and try to really solidify this. Any thoughts?
I do. I have some thoughts. I'm so excited for this because I know that was a big thing that I was pushing, and also, and hope after this experience, then, you know, a policy committee will follow, and then maybe like a sunshine committee sort of thing, and just kind of keep it, the more community involvement, right? The more community involvement, the more transparent everything is. So, really excited for this first step forward in a finance committee, or advisory board, whatever you choose to call it. So, really excited for this. And for me, going over the composition, I didn't know, like, first time out, putting too many restrictions on it. I know item D was making sure some was from each area of the district, which I fully support. I mean, I think you should in general. But to kind of put too much on it, it's kind of like, well, it might be lessening the field of everybody. For me, like I said, I put a lot of thought into this. I like the resume idea, you know, maybe if there's to be a characteristics or a box to check, maybe, you know, live in the district, of course. I don't know if that's a given, but I think that should be a box to check, and maybe have a couple years' experience in finances of some sort, whether it's any realm in the finance area, I think would be a nice box to check probably. So, but yeah, I like this. I'm excited. Do we have a timeline as to, I know we're discussing tonight and we'll come back next month, or the next meeting with ideas, or, but as to when we wanna get this started?
I would like it to be started for that first fall forecast, and that comes out in November, so sometime a meet in October. It'll be my thought process on that, so, or even prior to that. So, we're here in July. We have some time to get that information out. I think we're in a good spot to get that moving by that timeframe.
Okay, great.
Thank you all for putting this together. I think it's a good thing.
All right, so so far, everybody, I'm just hearing everybody's got some.
I like it.
Like the structure so far.
Yes.
We'll get moving on it then. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna move on now to fiscal and operational management with Mrs. Peterson.
All right. Let's talk money. We have about six items to bring forward, starting with the first one, which is return of, return of advances. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to return advances to the general fund as presented. You're gonna see X one. Background on this one, these are the return of the advances out to the federal grant funds at the end of the fiscal year, when books close. We have to do this each year to be in compliance. So, we close it, we put it, pay it, do it out, and then when they reimburse us, we're paying it back in. Item number two, acceptance of proposal from the Ohio School Plan. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the proposal from the Ohio School Plan for insurance coverage for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year for the following items. This is the general liability, the cyber security, violence, pollution, auto, property as detailed. This is CX two. Item number three is approval of students deemed impractical to transport. You guys have heard me mention this several times within the past couple meetings. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the list of students deemed impractical to transport for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year as presented. You're gonna see X three. According to section three two two seven point oh one of the Ohio Revised Code, the average cost of transportation per child in the state of Ohio for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year will be determined by the State Department of Education and Workforce. We say that because we want everyone to know, we don't decide the price. Someone else dictates that. Background on this one was, we approved a list of students at the May nineteenth meeting for the students that we were aware of that was impractical to transport. This list is for additional students that have since been deemed impractical to transport. So. Item number four is approval, approve the payment in lieu of transportation. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the payment in lieu transportation list for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. You're gonna see X four. According to section three two two seven point oh one of the Revised Code, the minimum amount for school year, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, fifty percent of the average cost per pupil to transport for the previous school year has been determined by the State Board of Education in the amount of five hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. So, that was the amount for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. And it is recommended that the Board of Education approve that payment in lieu of transportation to those residents who applied, and they were approved to receive that reimbursement. So, again, remember, I was saying, they have to transport for the whole year, and then, we pay them their reimbursement. So, again, the board previously approved two lists. This is the final approval. That includes all of the students that are owed payment in lieu of transportation for the previous school year, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. So, that should mean you will not hear me bring up the previous school year for a lieu transportation. Item number five, agreement with the Ohio Auditor of State's office. It is recommended that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with the Ohio Auditor of State's office to assist in the preparation of the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, at a cost not to exceed twenty-seven thousand. You're gonna see X five. Background for this one for you. The Ohio Auditor of State has assisted the district with the preparation of that annual comprehensive financial report since two thousand seventeen. The staff accountants for the auditor's office has provided an excellent service in pulling the report together and providing technical expertise and compliance to all the governmental accounting standards required by the Government Finance Office Association. So, the report, I have seen it before, and I still think they continue to do very well. Item number six, authorization to pay a bill in accordance with section five seven oh five point four one of the Ohio Revised Code. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay the bill for July that was not processed in accordance with section five seven oh five point four one of the Ohio Revised Code, CX six. For that one, at the last meeting, a community member stopped and asked me and Hugh a really good question on that. When we say, like, we need to approve something that wasn't paid in accordance, what that could mean is, is from the time we had a meeting to a time something was approved, or like, in the cycle, it just means that maybe a transaction had to not be processed in a certain order. But we still gotta approve it. So, that's why you hear us say, "It wasn't in accordance." That mean we broke the law, but it wasn't in accordance. We're gonna acknowledge that, but we're need to approve it. So, it was a good question that she asked. She was like, "Why do you say that?" And I was like, "You should have asked me." After reviewing these items, I move them for passage as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Just, you know, I look over things again, then a question was right. The section two, X two, just to confirm, so the policy is for the one million dollars, right? Like, that's how much the entire policy is? And then, how much does that cover in there?
That covers all of our properties, all of our buses.
So, how, how big is that policy? Like, is there like a dollar amount to how much?
One million, three million for our general liability, and it covers all of our property up to replacement value if something happened to a school.
Oh, awesome.
And we also changed our policy to have replacement cost value back for our buses as well.
Oh, good.
And we had, we had a loss last year, and it was replaced at full replacement cost, so that was good.
And that was covered under this?
Yes.
The bus accidents and stuff.
And I did have, last year I had independently had somebody look over our insurance policy, and they, you know, to say, "Hey, where do you think they are in the market?" And they said, "You're not gonna find a better policy than this."
Oh, good.
So, that was, that was a good audit that was done.
That's a good question.
Good to know. I was like, oh, you know, the insurance, good to have. All right, thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I'll, second, did you already?
Thank you, Denise. Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskinney.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. We're gonna move back to personnel with Mrs. Martindale.
Thank you very much. All right, so for tonight's board meeting and our regular personnel update, we have nine personal items involving one hundred and sixty-six persons. This includes twenty-one certificated administrative resignations, four administrative employments, ninety-four certificated employments, seventy-four of which are supplemental, five classified resignations, fifteen classified changes in employment, and seventeen classified employments. And having reviewed all of these items, I move them for passage.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Liskinney.
Thank you, Ms. Liskinney. Roll call.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. Liskinney.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. And I'm gonna thank Mr. Jordan, whoever, there you are, for everything you've been doing, filling these positions.
That's right, whatever.
Great job. Thank you so much. Moving on now, are we back to you?
We're back to me again. Here we go. Just hire, hire, hire. Here we go. All right, so I have two more items listed under administrative employment contracts. We're gonna have to do two separate votes. So, for action item number one, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the contracts of the non-SWA administrators effective August first, two thousand twenty-five. And having reviewed this item, I do move it forward for action.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Roll call.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskinney.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so then, item number two, the Board of Education recommends the approval of a five-year contract for Mr. Randy Banks Superintendent effective August first, two thousand twenty-five. And having reviewed this item, I move it for action.
Can I get a second, please?
Second, D'Angelo Steele.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskinney.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. Thanks for hanging out with us, Randy. All right, we're gonna move on now to public participation related non-agenda items. We have one, which is Kyra Hall.
One and only this evening. Okay, can I back this up, please? Okay, so constituents. The shortest and simplest definition is serving to form, compose, or make up a unit. Southwestern City Schools is a unit. Every person in this room is a constituent of the school board, of the elected school board. All three thousand eight hundred employees, all twenty-two thousand students, and all one hundred and forty-four thousand residents, of which a hundred and six thousand of those are adults, are in fact all of your constituents. Chris received ten thousand two hundred and thirty-four votes. Denise received fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty, which she likes to continuously remind us of. Julie received fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand, I'm sorry, nine hundred and two votes. That means that not everyone voted for you. However, it has been said out loud by those three individuals that they are acting and making decisions for all of the constituents listed above based on the wishes of those few that voted for them. The residents, students, and staff of this district are all your constituents, whether they could, couldn't, did, or like me, did not vote for you. I know you are all aware, because myself and people like me get up here month after month to remind you that you represent a large minority population of students. In turn, that means you represent their parents, most of which are not eligible to vote. Their voices deserve to be heard, their wishes deserve to be honored, and their students' education and everything that relates to it should be respected and valued. All of those people are your constituents. You have three thousand eight hundred staff members in this district that rely on your ability to see the bigger picture and hope you do it with a broad vision while making your decisions. You being able to see past your political alignments, conservative ideologies, and the personal agenda of the Moms for Liberty Call is crucial. But it seems that you lack the ability to do so. The decisions you make, the policies you advocate for here in this district, on a state or a federal level, are what steers and funds this district. If our staff doesn't receive the compensation to match their job, they're likely to leave. If the staff doesn't receive the resources, like either selecting comprehensive curriculum, tangible items like pencils, or actual support from aides seriously affects their ability to do their job to the highest degree, which leads to our students receiving a subpar education. Does this seem like the right path for all of your constituents? The constituents of this district also have several board members that support Ohio House Bill two sixty-nine, and it reads in part, "The Department of Education and Workforce shall develop a model success sequence and character education curriculum for developmentally appropriate instruction for grades seven through twelve. The model curriculum shall consist of the value of finishing high school, which is great, working full-time, sure, for some, getting married before having children, and instruction in the following character traits and fundamental values deeply rooted in the history and the tradition of the United States." I've selected a few to focus on. Respect for patriotism, service to the community, and concern for the common good. The second is respect for religious faith, morality, wisdom, and knowledge. And the last is respect for lifelong marriage, sexual fidelity within marriage, and sexual abstinence outside of marriage. Why does a school need to teach patriotism? Most of us aren't feeling very patriotic these days. Not everyone is of the same belief or religious faith, so why does our public school need to teach about that? Not all people live or love the same way, so why does a school need to teach our students about marriage and a... about marriage and abstaining from sex before doing so? This doesn't sound like representing all of your constituents. In fact, this all sounds like indoctrination to me, but wait, I thought drag queens reading books about acceptance and respect for all and safe space signs in our schools was doing that. I don't think so. As we move forward with this atrocious state budget that was passed and the federal government gutting funding for education, this board is going to be faced with a lot of very tough decisions. You'll be thinking about what services and programs to cut, what staff need to be let go, how many buses we can cut, and how far we can extend the distance to walk to school. The NSBLC advisory board that you join may suggest that you start your cuts with the most vulnerable population of students, students with varying disabilities and our English-language learners. Those students and their families rely on you to make the right decision to ensure that their education continues appropriately and equitably. They are your constituents after all. Everyone here is a constituent, and we demand that you do your job to represent all of us.
Thank you. We'll move on to items for action or discussion, has anybody got anything to discuss this evening?
President Boso, I have something that I wanted to share. I came across this success story the other day, and I thought it very apropos to what's going on in our district, and I wanted to share. It's actually, you may have heard, and it's a story, a success story really, about the difference between McDonald's and Chick-fil-A. We all know McDonald's, we all know Chick-fil-A, we've been to both, right? Some love McDonald's, some love Chick-fil-A. McDonald's is four times the size, has four times the footprint of Chick-fil-A, McDonald's restaurants, four times by their footprint, and they're open four more days per month than Chick-fil-A. We all know Chick-fil-A's closed on Sundays, right? Yet McDonald's revenue is only half that of Chick-fil-A. How could that be? Very interesting, I thought. Both serving something that people enjoy, the difference isn't what they serve, but how they serve. Chick-fil-A believes that graciousness and retention of customers is the key. It's not the who or the what, it's how you serve. Investing in the relationships is the thing that makes them a success, and I think that's one of the things that we are doing here, and I'm proud to say as a board member that we are investing in our students, we're investing in our families, and we're investing in the staff of this district, and I'm very proud of that. I felt that it was very unfortunate when the union made a statement that they wanted to unseat, their goal was very political and using their membership fees to get political and unseat all of the folks up here, at least most of the folks up here. And it's unfortunate, because really what, and I can't speak for all the board members, but I'm speaking for myself, that, you know, this isn't, we're not up here for political gain, we're up here for students, and we're up here for families, and I'm up here for students, and I'm up here for families. And we do listen to the teachers, and if you were at our visioning session, you would know, because we listen to our teachers, we listen to our students, and we listen to our families, and that's how we set our goals for this year. So again, I just wanna say that it's not the who or the what, it's how, it's how you serve, and that is something that I try to do each and every day. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Liskini. Anyone else?
No, that was really well said, thank you.
Alright, we're gonna move on to adjournment, I recommend the Board of Education be adjourned. Can I get a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson, roll call, please. Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Liskini?
Yes.
Ms. Martindale?
Yes.
Mr. Boso?
Yes, thank you everybody for being here.